Good afternoon, everyone. The special meeting of the Valparaiso City Council is called to order on Monday, July 10, 2023, at 3:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Protim Hamada. Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Mayor Santinas.
Here. Public comments. Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, pursuant to Governor Code Section 54954.3A, the public may address the City Council on matters listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on a listed item should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes to address the City Council.
I was kind of thinking, since this is a study session, maybe we can allow the public to make a comment after the presentation? Will it be okay? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a conflict on a property that's near this project, potential project, so I'm going to excuse myself.
Okay. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Coops has refused himself from this item. Thank you, Dan. We'll see you at 7:00? Oh, 5:30, 5:30, 5:30.
Yeah, that's what you'd have to do. Come back at 7:00.
5:30, 5:30. All right. Item 4A, Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, it's one item and its consideration for possible action. Receive, file, and provide direction based on the report recommendations regarding establishing an arts district on Clark Avenue between Alondra Boulevard and Rose Street. We have a couple presenters today. First up is Ms. Oba, our planning director, and we have Mr. James Troyer. He's an independent consultant who's going to assist her in that presentation.
All right, Ms. Oba. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. So for a little bit of background regarding this study, on both sides of Clark Avenue, specifically between Alondra Boulevard and Oak Street, there are several commercial and office spaces that are currently vacant or underutilized. At the request of Mayor Santinas, staff sought out to analyze existing uses within the area and explore the possibility of establishing an art district within the area. Staff amended our agreement with Trepepi Smith and Associates to provide planning consultant services to complete a study regarding the arts district, establishing an arts district. And the study has two distinct areas. Area 1 is along Clark Avenue between Alondra Boulevard and Oak Street, and Area 2 is along Clark Avenue between Flower Street and Rose Street. The purpose of this study session is to present the conclusions and recommendations of the art district study to the City Council and to obtain direction and feedback from the City Council of the potential to establish an art district on Clark Avenue. And I am going to introduce James Troyer. He's our consultant that completed this study. He has worked with staff on several reiterations of the study, and he will be providing the conclusions and recommendations, so I'll turn it over to him.
Oops. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm James Troyer, Senior Business Analyst with Trepepi Smith. And we looked really intensely at the Clark Avenue and citywide arts and culture issues, and we delivered the report to city staff, and the council's been provided a copy of it. We broke Clark Avenue into two areas because they're both very different in terms of their development potential. Area 1 suffers from a large amount of vacancies. There are several photos in the report demonstrating the amount of office and commercial vacancies between Alondra and Oak. These properties have little depth, so they would be very difficult for a developer to consolidate and redevelop. Some of that could happen, but right now, it's probably not something that's very viable. We have a later recommendation about, you know, zoning strategy for the whole street, and maybe we could work on making that portion of Clark a little bit more viable for development. But the recommendation for Area 1 is a rehabilitation, kind of re-tenanting with a arts program that we reviewed from the City of Campbell, and have a very economic intensive, economic development-intensive strategy. Work with property owners, brokers, the Chamber, and promote arts uses on Clark Avenue. Area 2 is a whole different animal. There's large, heavy commercial uses and industrial uses, auto repair, auto body, some industrial uses, and those properties would be unlikely to turn around unless you introduced some zoning strategies like maybe increased residential density, and we'll discuss that later. Next. So there's 23 pages in the report, so there's plenty of information about different options. I looked at this PowerPoint as, you know, if there were kind of 10 things that I would want the council to kind of consider, you know, these are the 10 things that I would kind of look at. Developing a citywide survey, finding out what the interest is in Bellflower, from Bellflower residents for increased arts and culture, and of course, report back to City Council and the community. Inventory everything that you're already doing in terms of arts and culture, your recreation classes, nonprofit activity, any funding that you give nonprofits, or any arts activities like the Bellflower, is the Bellflower Symphony still active? I know it was at one time. Increased capacity building, you can't do it alone, so you've got to bring together different facets of the community. School districts would be huge. The Chamber is huge. Engage seniors and veterans. Community colleges and CSULB and Dominguez Hills to develop an artist pool that would display art in the city and LA County. So we want to pursue grants. If you're interested in moving forward, we want to pursue grants. We want to minimize impact to the general fund. So the LA County Arts and Strategic, Arts and Culture Strategic Plan, this was a plan that was adopted, it's only a year old. It was adopted last year, and it has funding and technical assistance for various types of arts programs, parks, library programming, just different activities, and that's more detailed in the report. The LA County Arts Ed Collective provides school districts with free technical assistance in developing strategic plans regarding youth arts education and development, helps develop middle and high school artists. And I will say, in this region, I saw LA Unified, I mean, Norwalk La Marada is in it, ABC, Downey, Paramount, a lot of the regional school districts in this area are in that program. And there's, I reviewed the city of Santa Ana, and they have artist loft developers that are looking to get projects in other cities. And we could arrange for an artist loft developer to tour Clark Avenue to identify some potential sites, and of course, apply for larger grants at the federal, state, and foundation level. Other actions, slowly introduce increased art classes citywide to gauge interest, designate a city department to administrate arts and culture citywide, talked about walking tours, a mural and utility box painting program. We reviewed the East Long Beach Village Arts District, and there were several photos in the study about their mural and utility painting program. There was a Bellflower Art Association at one time. I don't know if that's still active, but it might be a good idea to help revive that or a similar nonprofit. And consider a five- and 10-year cultural or strategic plan. If you want to measure one, three, five-year achievements, a plan could be done. And then review the In-Lu Art and Public Places Fund. So this is the area from Alondra to Oak, and it's in the report. We went block by block to document all of the vacancies. And, you know, due to COVID, due to remote work, due to Amazon, these small kind of neighborhood commercial centers, you know, are having a hard time. So I think to repurpose it as an arts district is something that's, you know, potentially So we looked at this program. It's City of Campbell, it's called their Vacant Storefront Program. And as you can see, on the left and the right, it's kind of a before and after, where the city goes in and contacts property owners and property managers with vacant tennis spaces, and then artists display two- and three-dimensional art. And the window space is cleaned up, and it's displayed, just like you see on the right. And there's, I'm not going to go into all the details of that program, but there's a lease agreement, there's an indemnity to indemnify the property owner and the city in case there's any vandalism, but, you know, you're not hanging anything on any walls or any windows. It's all displayed, you know, by ESOL, so it's close to the window. So we would have a zoning and a general plan strategy for both areas. So as mentioned, Area 1 is Alondra to Flower, and Area 2 would be from Flower down to Oak or Rose Street, I'm sorry. So as I mentioned briefly, the plan for Area 1 would be economic development-intensive, use the Vacant Storefront Program, heavily promote an arts district, that there's an arts district in the future, and create an arts overlay zone. What the arts overlay zone would do was identify as many artist-related uses as we can in that zone, adopt the zone by council, and then promote that zone through the Chamber, through brokers, through property owners, and try to create a buzz with the arts overlay zone. Area 2, as part of the city's housing element process, it had to zone some sites or pre-zone some sites, 30 units to the acre. And those two sites are at Clark and Artesia and Clark at Park. We want to look at that Area 2 doing the same kind of residential density but require some commercial and some public art, so that Area 2 area has a chance to turn around. So the recommendation is to receive and file and provide direction on establishing an arts district on Clark Avenue, or discuss other actions related to this item. And that concludes the presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Troyer. It was a very comprehensive report. I read the report, and I was really impressed with the depth of your analysis. I think you went block by block, and you really got into the nitty-gritty of the area from, all the way from Alondra all the way to Rose, if I remember correctly. And just for the information of the public, as Ms. Oba mentioned, I was the one who made the request. That was about, about a year ago, about a year ago. So what happened was, I was, I drive Clark Avenue very often, especially going to church. And so one day I kind of noticed there's so much vacancies, vacant properties along Clark Avenue, especially from between Alondra and Oak. And as you know, we are, we will be building a youth and senior center called the Oak Center in Sims Park. And I was kind of thinking about, what can we do about this area, especially with the upcoming construction of the Oak Center? So something came to my mind, well, why don't we have an art district in this area? Because in my mind, I mean, I'm just sharing this conceptfully, full disclosure, I was kind of thinking that it would be nice to have an arts district, because if you look at from Alondra, we have a couple of restaurants already. We have the Japanese restaurant, we have Uncle Bud's, we have Second Healthy Sandwich Shop. And so the concept that was kind of percolating in my mind is, if we have an art exhibit, we can always use the Oak Center to exhibit the arts from this artist. So to me, it is a kind of, it's a kind of a self-contained community in itself. You have restaurants in the area, you have coffee shop, and then at the same time, you have a place where they can exhibit their art. So that's why I came to staff, and then we did a walking tour of Clark Avenue, again, from Oak Street to Alondra. And the reason I did not go as far south, because south of Oak, you have Sims Park and the church on the east side, and on the west side, you have the school district. The whole block is the school district. And I'm of the opinion that we can start small, just like many years ago, we decided to say, well, if you want to revitalize the city of Bellflower, we want to start small. And so we focused on downtown. So I want to carry that concept, start small, and then later on, expand it at the, you know, at a later date. So my question, Mr. Troyer, is a couple of things. In your study, you mentioned about Campbell, one of them. Is there any place that you have studied before that the environment is similar to Clark Avenue? Any city that you have done a similar study?
That was the only city. There may have been other cities with a vacant store program, but it seemed like that city was the most successful.
Hmm, I see.
And I hadn't talked to their economic development staff there, but I did some research online, and it's been very successful.
And what was their timeframe from the start, when it was presented to the City Council, until it came into fruition? Do you have any idea?
That I would have to go back and check.
Okay. And if you can go back to one of the slides in terms of what are the recommendations, the steps? Okay, there you go. Oh, no, there's another one prior to this. There you go. In terms of building relationships, I think we're going to have a very good relationship with all of these things that you listed, school district, the Chamber, seniors, veterans, community colleges, LA County. And coincidentally, speaking of community college district, I was in discussion today with the Arts Director of Seritas College, and I kind of reminded him, because, well, there's so many things going into my mind, we are, I am discussing with staff right now, just to let my City Council colleagues know, that we're discussing about having a photo contest in the city of Bellflower. So I was in discussion with the Seritas College about, you know, some kind of technical and artistic concept. And so the professor asked me, so what have you done in the city of Bellflower? So I reminded him that we did the, we have done the Student Art Festival for third, fourth, and fifth grader and sixth graders, which I think was very successful, to kind of introduce them to the art concept. And now with the photo contest, which will be open, I think, hopefully from kindergarten all the way to adults, hopefully we can make it happen. So as far as community college, and when I mentioned about, actually today, this afternoon, we will have a study session on art district, and he just got so excited about it. I think if he had the time, he would have been here. So anyway, we'll continue talking. So in terms of the list that you gave us, I think we can really work with them. In fact, I invited the office of our speaker. Speaker Randon and Clarice is here, because I heard to the grapevine that the speaker is a patron of the art. So I will be seeking support from the speaker eventually. So I think we have more collaborations that we can think of here. LA County, as you mentioned, there is a, there's a new project or program in LA County that we can tap, and Supervisor Hunt is very supportive of the city of Bellflower. So I think we can make it. I'm just getting, I'm just very excited about this project, especially what it can do along Clark Avenue. If you drive along Clark Avenue, it's just, it's just in a very sad state. And Councilman Dante and I have been in the planning commission back then. That area is very challenging because of the zoning. We don't exactly know what the zoning is, whether it's residential or commercial. I mean, there's hodgepodge of commercial, then residential, and so on and so forth. So, but I think with bringing something new, something different, I'm hoping that it will revitalize that area, that it can be an attraction for more developments later on. So anyway, that's my comments for now. So I'd like to ask my colleagues, any question of, Mr. Troyer?
No questions. I'll go first. No questions. Interesting report. Sonny obviously has a vision, and like Sonny said many, many decades ago, we've all, even Victor, you know, he lives over in that neighborhood. And what are you going to do with Clark Street? Clark Street is a hodgepodge of residential, and if they can even, you know, build a building in front of the, in the front yard, and that turned into commercial, and it kind of happened over many moons ago. And what do you do with it? It's why they're vacant. The house gets rented out, but nobody wants to put a business, a viable business in what's left. There's remnants of things. And when this come across, the staff report that we finally saw after a year's worth the vision of Sonny a year ago and whatnot, and then the report that we got, the analysis is, you know, absorbing the staff report and thinking about it, yes, it'll work. And really, I can see the Alondra to Oak section probably going first. You know, if it gets a little tentacles and it starts, people start hanging on and doing little things, because, you know, you can live in an art studio kind of a thing. And it kind of mimics very small, older downtowns, like on the coast or Northern California. And I'm just, I'm just sharing some of my own thoughts that I've seen on my travels. Like, you can see where it can mimic some of that. And then I didn't even think about the restaurant portion of it, which Sonny brought up to us, is, yeah, there's some viable restaurants there right now, and they kind of go together. And it'd be kind of neat to see that pop off as a possible venue. And again, like the mayor said, Bellflower Boulevard, people think, wow, when did that happen? But, you know, that's decades in the making also. It all starts with a vision, and it was, you know, the mayor's vision at this point is to do something with it. And we know downtown seemed to work, and it's still growing. Why wouldn't this work? And I like the idea of 30, Area 2, let's say, the south side is 30 acres, 30 units per acre, bringing the density in, because that's the only way you're going to get that ugly commercial that is there, that's been there, that hasn't been developed since the 60s. You know, some of that, some of those buildings got the same paint from the 60s and the same asphalt. You know, the only way that's going to develop is, it's a bigger parcel, if you can kind of make it pencil out with something nice down below and residential on top, and that's why the 30 acres, and it does fit. All these points that were discussed here in the study that we did, and your vision, Mayor, it all comes together, and I can see it working. I think it's a great job. That's it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start off by thanking you for bringing this item. And I remember when we had the conversation to include the southern part of the study I'll first want to talk about, what's the length of the actual area that you reviewed and studied, sir? By the way, great presentation and great report.
I don't have the exact length, Councilmember Sanchez, but as you can see, it is several blocks long. It's a good part of Clark Avenue, which is pretty much Alondra, which is probably midway through the city, all the way down to the southerly border. That was a whole area that was studied.
Yeah. May I, Alondra to Artesia should be a mile.
Okay.
If that's what you're looking at, to give you an idea.
No, that's a good idea. Yeah, perfect. So I think, you know, everything that was said, I agree on. I mean, I think that us looking at this and taking an approach and a stab at rezoning or redoing and taking on programs like this are important and vital, so I support this vision, Mr. Mayor. I'll start off with that. The only thing that I'm a bit in disagreement, or I disagree in a bit, is the start point. Respectfully, I think that we should look at Area 2. If we're going to look at one area first, Area 2 would be the first one, in my opinion. I would prefer to do both at the same time, but if we were to have to choose one, I would say that Area 2 has the most potential. It has vacant lots, it still has sizable parcels. On top of that, we would hit multiple prongs at one time, meaning arena numbers, commercial development, the creation of more of a walkable pedestrian area in that part of the town, where we're seeing complaints and concerns from our residents in that matter. And to top it off, that area serves as, and when we look at our weekly reports, is the most crime in our city. So when we focus on Area 2, not only are we tackling it from many different angles, but we're also taking care of some of those issues. When we start developing and start improving the neighborhood, we're going to decrease our crime rate in those areas. So I would, I would say we focus on Area 2 if we have to choose one or the other. That would be my only thing that I would disagree on at this point in time. But other than that, I think it's a great plan. I think that the report was well done. I really enjoyed the, reading the Village, the East Village, what Long Beach did, the creation of retail restaurants, drinking establishments, and vintage stores. I think that was a neat approach. So just want to say that, I'll leave it at that at this point in time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you for your comments. And I guess we'll, for lack of a better word, I think that's where our disagreement is going to be, in terms of where to start. I'm of the opinion that I want to start small, because this is going to be a long-term project. It's not going to happen overnight. I think if we'll be lucky, if we get something visible within three years. Okay? So I was kind of envisioning that if we attract artists to come to the city, let's say we attract five artists, and they settle in different blocks, which is a big possibility, then it's going to be a hodgepodge of the art district. If the area is too long, not confined to a smaller area, then there's no kind of sense that you have a district, because they're all scattered between, let's say, one in Cedar, one in Ramona, one in Arkansas, one on Main, and one on, let's say, Los Angeles. So to me, it's not a district if you have five that are scattered over a long stretch of the road. But if we can confine it and start with Oak to Alondra, and give the five similar number, five artists getting a work-live environment, for example, to me, that's the ideal one. They work and they live in the same building, then it is, it's a great statement that, yes, it is an art district, because now you can see, let's say, one on Harvard, one on Main, one on Olive, and one in Oak, and one on Los Angeles. So to me, it's a district, because now they're confined into a smaller area. The second thing is, it's a matter of financing, just like going back to, let's say, a decade or two ago. We don't have the money to kind of invest into a big area to have a development. I think back then, we made a decision, let's concentrate on Bellflower Boulevard first, because our money will not go all the way to Lakewood, to Clark, to Alondra, to Rosecrans, to Artesia. There's no way. So we started, and I think our track record shows, will prove that we were very successful in starting small, and now we're expanding. We go all the way now to Artesia, to Rosecrans, and all Lakewood. That's my, that's my, that's my opinion on this.
Of course, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I was in those conversations when they began. I think Councilmember Dutton would agree with that, and I'll quote him for once telling me that it was those conversations and the thoughts and ideas that I brought to that table that helped spark the downtown. Of course, you guys implemented it and did it, but what I'm seeing here is, the south corridor, if you want to call it Area 2, which we could decrease or make smaller, is the next Bellflower Boulevard. It's not the northern part. It's not the northern part. Now that I'm just going to call it out. There there's more available space and larger lot sizes available on the south of that ninety-one freeway. And there's actual vacant lots that are just easier to move forward with versus the semi residential neighborhoods between Oak and Alondra. I I understand that there are some commercial areas in there. But but I think there's way more return on our investment to focus on the south of the ninety-one, maybe even include Park.
Yeah, but if you look at a study, I think the the consultant hit it very well. It's in the south south portion of the study. I think it's going to be more of economic reasons why they will convert.
Right.
So for example, let's say, south of the freeway, I can think of about probably five to seven auto shops. Five to seven auto shops.
At least.
Right, exactly.
So when I was reading the the analysis, if I'm the owner of that property, why would I change the tenant from an auto shop that generates a lot of money for me, if I'm the owner, to an art studio? Because, let's face it, artists don't make a lot of money. It's their passion.
I believe the consultant stated, and he can correct me if I'm mistaken, that it would be more of a commercial, right? So it would be a reshift, a rezoning, and it would entice a development, housing development one, with commercial on the mixed use, basically, development.
Right. The the concern would be in Area Two is is if you allowed a hundred percent residential. You could still you could still require a percentage of commercial. It could be a ten percent commercial, ninety percent residential split.
Right.
The other part would be to require public art on that new redevelopment or or have the applicant pay an in lieu fee and have that arts money restricted to Clark Avenue, so it could be used on any area of Clark Avenue.
Right.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes, please.
If I can add to that, too. Len helped me out to get the exact measurements, too. So just to clarify, from Alondra to Flower Street, it's seventeen hundred lineal feet. And then from Flower Street to Rose Street, it's about one mile. So there is a longer distance between Flower and Rose. When we were working with James on trying to come up with some potential implementation strategies, especially for like an overlay arts district, we did focus on Alondra to Flower because of those lot sizes because those would be the lots that are smaller in scale that would be hard to assemble to see any real, you know, new development. So the vision there or the potential there was potentially converting what's already there into these artist lofts and other types of uses that can help support an arts district. And then when we looked from Flower to Rose Street, they were mostly occupied in terms of the tenants and it's a range of uses as well. We didn't think it would be quite viable to have that same feel of how an arts district can play out in between Alondra to Flower. And then also between Flower and Rose Street and then more specifically at the intersections of Clark Avenue and Park and Clark Avenue and Artesia. When we went through our housing element update, we had already included those two larger intersections as opportunity areas.
Okay.
Where, because you have the larger lots and you do have occupancy there, it seemed that the most viable and best use there would be residential. And so that's why we focused those two intersections in our housing element update for housing. And then what James introduced in his presentation earlier is that if you wanted to go that step further, besides just housing, we could also include uses that would also be permitted in or that would help support an arts district. So that's just more clarification for the two areas and and really to hammer in kind of the housing element, housing opportunity area for.
So what I'm hearing, Mr. Mayor, if I may, what I'm hearing is Area One is more conversion versus Area Two is new development. So with that said, why can't we tackle them both that way and not have to pick one or the other?
Well, again, it's it's more of what how much how much are we willing to to invest initially?
Right.
And what's the rate of return on that?
Well, I think our greater rate of return is on, I mean, again, I I would prefer not to choose a side. I would prefer that we tackle them both. That's my opinion, but.
Yeah, we can implement both concurrently. So there's no reason why you can't move forward with each each area, you know, concurrently at the same time.
Okay.
You're just putting zoning and you're just putting zoning standards in place and then letting the free market, you know, dictate, you know, how development occurs.
All right.
May I, Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Dunn?
Yeah, get into this, too. Definitely, Area One would be a lot easier is is to start something, to start it and let it kind of ferment a little bit. And and everybody, I've always said this, is one of my sayings, is everybody wants to ride the coattails of something good. Got to start somewhere. Start little, big. But as Elizabeth said, that was where I was going to go, that has to be scraped. There is no property over there for sale. When you have an auto repair entitlement, that's that's a lot of money. You can't get that in any other city. It's why we got some of this crap. It's it's the entitlement that you get to work on cars and it's not, you know. It's not as a, what can I say? It's not as a, it's it's an ugly business, okay? I know it. But it's 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 a blighted business and that's why there's blight down there. That stuff has to be scraped, but the property owner is getting a lot of rent for those auto repair things. And if you look at that thing, it's almost like you have out of town, second generation trusts the properties in because it gives you that look. An example with with Bellflower Boulevard, the last couple of decades that the city has done so well with is it started with, you know, the kiosks, let's say. And then we got a barbecue place and then we got this and then we got that. And then it went from there. And it's twenty years later, now we're doing south of Artesia because it's such a big monster down there. If you don't have private enterprise coming in and taking care of the the big stuff, it has to be scraped or purchased. And that's why I mentioned thirty units per acre. That's the only way that stuff's going to pencil out. And I believe that's why it's in the in the studies because you can get some of that stuff and you can build new housing or whatever, like we have downtown and have storefronts on underneath it, whether for the arts district or whatever. But it's something that has to be nurtured. As far as money from our coffers, yeah, it's asking us to put some kind of budget and we don't know. First, it's going to be some, maybe a monument sign. And then there's going to be some signage stating that this area is this. And that's where the money's going in. And hopefully, we get, you know, some grants that we can push to people that want to buy a house with a with a with a commercial building out front that they can show their wares. That's how it's going to have, it's going to have to start small. And once you have a few of that, and that's where, you know, bigger type of artsy stuff that wants to ride the coattails, is what I said, is going to come. But I have no, do we we handle it as one and two or at the same time or 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 one and two? It doesn't matter, but I mean, I really believe that we need to start small and let and let society and the fair market decide what's coming. You know, it's a vision. Who knows, it may, you know, it might die.
There's no guarantee.
But trying nothing's not the right thing to do. So you got to try something.
Exactly.
If you try and fail, it's a win.
Well, here, I'll you know, I'll I I think the concurrent plan is the way to go because I think time is the issue here, right? We're not looking at anything really at the moment. It's a long play. And I don't think it costs us anything to do the rezoning or, I mean, what would be the impact financially on us to do both concurrently? Do we have numbers on that?
We do not have numbers yet, no.
Okay. Do we have the numbers on either Area One or Area Two?
Currently not. So we brought the study session forward to see, number one, if there's any interest in it. And then if so, we need to develop our next steps and what that would cost, what that would mean for our budget. We haven't quite got there yet, gotten there yet.
Yeah. Okay. So are we looking for direction?
Well, I I guess my question, my first question to both of you is, are you are you in favor of moving forward with an art district? Regardless of the zone?
Yes.
That's the first step. And what I'd like to do is have staff do a study, whether the next steps, give us recommendations, what are the things we need to do to implement this art district, whether it's one or two or both, cause it out, give some recommendations.
Agreed. Beth, so quickly, as far as the first step would probably be the zoning and the overlay, correct? And is that something that's an in-house issue? Would you want to bring in a consultant to do that?
Well, so we've already, well, we're already seeking a consultant to do the housing, I'm sorry, to do the rezoning and general plan amendment for the two housing opportunity areas in Area Two. So that's already underway. We haven't entered into contract yet, but we're still seeking a consultant to do those. And then for if we move forward with the overlay, it would be, we could probably do that in-house or we can potentially piggyback off of the same consultant that would do the housing.
So tell me, in your mind, the firing order. First off, if they were to do it concurrently, you'd let the studies carry on with the current zone change you're looking for for the housing issue, right? Completion of that, you would want to do the overlay at least with Area Two. And then Area One, you would just do the overlay on without messing with the zoning particularly, correct?
We would still need to do an overlay zone. It would still result in a zone change.
Correct, understood. But you're not messing with necessarily changing the housing component or anything part of that in Area One?
Correct, yes, that that would be correct.
I guess that's my, I didn't ask the question correctly. So in your minds eye, what is the the best way to move forward with this if for staff, it would be to do it concurrently, wait for the the first part to be done in Area Ones you're studying now and then do the overlay afterwards? Or would you want to initiate the overlay before you do the first parts that you mentioned earlier?
I would think that the best order would be to start with Area One. I say that because as part of our overall housing element update, the first thing that we are planning to bring to the council is the rezone, rezoning of the transit overlay district in downtown because that generates the most amount of units to meet our arena. Then secondary to that, we were going to bring all the rest of the zone changes to the council, which is about a year long effort.
But that work is going on independently of what we do on the arts district, if we if we move forward with that, correct?
Correct. It it does kind of dovetail in because when we write the standards for housing, if we want to include commercial and more artist uses, we would tie that into whatever zoning plan we come up with.
What I'm hearing is then it's really the council's preference, how they want to move forward with the arts arts district overlay, if they want to move forward and how they want to implement it. Because you're going to carry on with your work on the area, what is what is considered Area Two here. You're carrying on with that regardless, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Independent of the arts.
So you don't have, we don't have any single preference, one way or the other, how we do this? Or do you? You would want to start with one and do that simultaneously or do you don't care?
Yeah, if you're looking for timing, like what we can accomplish first, it would be Area One first.
Okay.
Then Area Two. Because because Area Two is already happening happening independent, I just foresee that taking a longer time.
So but the work would more or less be going concurrently regardless, correct?
Correct, yeah, yes.
I just want to, I just the clarification on that.
Well, and not only that, I'm just, I'm looking only for zoning, also looking at other steps that the consultants recommending. For example, let's say, survey of our residents preferences, things like that. So I I want to have a kind of a comprehensive listing of things that we need to do to implement this art district concept.
You're looking, as I, you're looking at two steps here. You have the zoning and the overlay issue and then you have the secondary implementation of that.
Yeah.
So that's all, I just wanted to clarify that before. So it's really up to the council how they want to do the firing order on that.
Correct, yeah, exactly. Okay. All right. Anyone from the public would like to chime in? We've been talking about this art district. It's your opportunity to to share your input. Please come in, sign in and state your name for the record.
My name is Jean Dare. And of course, this is a project that I would really, I would welcome. But the only thing is, you've talked a lot about specifics, but what I would want to know is who's going to come to this? That's the important thing. I mean, it's not, yeah, I think we need to learn more about what kind of a draw we would have. Now, the area that's, I I like the area of Flower to Alondra, but quite frankly, I think more people would come where they could do other things besides going to an art district. And I think that the lower half would have more, well, not where you'd walk around, but eating places and and other things. But I do think you need to start with some kind of a feasibility study and find out where you're going to draw your customers from, what, who you're going to have as clients for these buildings. And I think that's really where you need to start. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think I think part of that is it will be part of the marketing of this art district to entice artists to set up studios. I think that is the concept, whether it's whatever art they are into, they will come. Because it has to be, artists don't really make a lot of money. It's sad to say that until until they die. When they die, I mean, the price just goes up, okay? That's that's unfortunate. Artists themselves don't really make money while they're alive, okay? So it's really their passion. Their passion is art and they would come to the city if it makes sense for them, if they will be happy and let's say. I I think the the initial concept here is more of a work live environment wherein they will have a rental space, let's say it's a commercial, and then they live in that area. And then they have their, they have their bedroom, they have their kitchen and so on and so forth. And then the next, the second part of that 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 building is their their office or their business or their art studio, things like that. To me, that's because I've been to a lot of art studios, that is typically the setup of an artist's studio.
I think Ted, I think our position is it's more a statement of philosophy than it is an outcome. We don't really know what the outcome is.
Right, exactly.
Mr. Mayor, I think with that, with hearing you kind of say that, I think we're actually looking at this from two different angles. We're, you're, which is a good thing, I think, in this case, that you're looking at the art side of it specific. Where I'm more interested in from like the the East Village, I'm more interested in the restaurant, the retail, the drinking establishments, the vintage stores and the retail uses. So those components, that's the that's the components of the arts district that I am interested in in revitalizing from an economic standpoint, the south side, the Area Two. Whereas what I'm hearing from your side, the Area One, is more about, again, conversions for art display only, not necessarily, and correct me if I'm mistaken, not necessarily public, sorry, I'm having a, sorry, public gatherings. Yeah, you're not, yeah, exactly.
Art shows.
Thank you. You're not necessarily looking for the retail component of it. You're looking more for the display of art shows and things of that, like a gallery style thing.
Or an artist doing their artistry in that.
Right, yeah, it's kind, it's kind of both. I'm just responding to the question because Jim was asking, whom are we trying to attract?
Right.
Okay. So the first thing that comes to my mind is an artist who sets up shop on that, whatever it is, set up shop and start doing their art, doing their sales and doing a studio and then marketing their their wear, so to speak. That that's to me is the the concept. I'm not, eventually it could happen that you have a, I am not, I will not be surprised if a group of artists come together and have a share of share of space. I mean, there's just so many concepts here. I'm just responding to her question about whom are we trying to attract? To me, it's just artists that we're trying to attract. It can be, for example, let's say, for lack of a better word, the the project, art project Bellflower could be in that area.
Right, yeah.
I mean, something like that. So it's it's a conglomeration of different types of artists who can be in that area.
I think that might help clarify, Mr. Troyer on, I don't know if you know this or not, but in Campbell or the Long Beach East Village, were they cognizant of the outcomes before they started this? Or was it they start this just to see what would happen? Do you know off the top of your head?
No, I don't.
Mr. Troyer and Mr. Mayor, if I may, Mr. Troyer, on Mr. Troyer, and Mr. Mayor, if I may, uh, Mr. Troyer, on that note, um, is, is the East, East Village, is that part of the Biz Fed? Is that, or biz, uh, they, like, they have like a biz organization, like a?
I think they have a BID, Business Improvement District. Yeah, and then, then it's, it's all governed under a nonprofit, the, the East Village nonprofit.
Thank you.
That is correct. Their fun, their activities are funded.
Improvement District.
It's not coming through the public agenda.
And that, and that's the nonprofit that I think was talked about earlier, right? When you're doing the art walks, the, the bringing businesses, the vendors, you have to have that type of, um, support structure.
Well, we would have to look into that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Sanchez, and then if I may also add, um, because it sounds like your focus is on restaurant and retail uses, under the current commercial zones, those uses are already permitted by Rite. So there wouldn't necessarily be anything further zoning-wise to change those uses to.
Right, so, so I guess to, let's dive into that a little bit more. In the study, in the housing element that we proposed, did we propose only housing units, or are we allowed for mixed use? Cause then that makes this, the whole thing mute.
I want to say it was the, it was almost predominantly housing.
Okay.
So, um, our planning manager Rowan is helping me clarify. It was, it, it was included as mixed, but it could be just housing as well. And again, we haven't just, we haven't gone into that next step, because that's a whole nother set of public hearings that go before the council.
And what's your timeline on that, if you don't mind me asking?
Uh, we're hoping in the next year, um, our first goal is to get the TOD SP to the council, which hopefully will be in the next few months. And then after completion of that, probably within the year, within the next year, by 2024 would be the next phase.
Okay, so could we ensure that, and if my colleagues are on board with this, could we ensure that when we're doing that in a year and a half from now, that's when we tie it into the arts district? So now we focus on Area One? And then tie this back in, um, a, a, assuring that the zoning would, would allow for mixed use for, for retail, for restaurant, for, for breweries, for coin ops, all that stuff? With housing component, with a, with a large housing component, cause that's the only way it's gonna work. They're not gonna build, okay?
Yes, we can, because, um, we have to do, come up with a list of development standards and list of uses that would be allowed, so that could easily be included.
Okay. How does that sound to you, Mr. Mayor? We're okay with that?
Okay with that.
Okay.
Uh, anyone else who would like to chime in? Come on, there's no charge. Come on, come up.
Oh, you talked somebody into it.
Yes, exactly.
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name is Clarice Ortega. I'm with Assembly Member Anthony Rendon's office. And I just want to provide some insight, because we do work with artists, and, um, I know as Mara said, we do have a lot of concerns between how much artists make in order to build a studio or a mixed housing to studios. Um, we do have a couple of how, um, uh, what's it called, um, artists who have developed a guild. Um, this all came from, uh, our Cellar Arts Festival that we had a couple years back. Um, since then, we've created a hub of Southeast LA artists. So just a recommendation, if you needed to reach out to artists to get more, um, intake, um, I recommend to, to talk to the guild. Um, there's a couple of other artists who have actually developed their own studios and have opened it up to the community. So those are some good, um, artists that I recommend speaking with to get insight on how it's been, um, renting out this studio and, you know, the costs and everything for them.
So it's more like a kind of a communal, so to speak, communal approach?
Yes, so the Cellar, Cellar Artists Guild, um, was a bunch of artists from all over the Southeast LA, and they all, um, came together after the festival, and they developed the guild to kind of create a centralized hub where they can promote each other and then, um, keep each other on track for opportunities for artists. And, uh, I think a lot of people, when they think about art, they just think visual art. There's a lot more to it. There's videography, there's dance. So studios can be used for different purposes, not just painting, not just sculpture, so. Um, we even had culinary arts. I know, um, you mentioned earlier some, um, community colleges that you want to look into. I know the LBCC has a, um, culinary, um, school, so that's always a great thing to look into.
Yeah, same thing with, uh, Syracuse College. They have both.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So just wanted to provide some insight. I'm always happy to talk more about that and connect you with any artists you might.
Yeah, okay, great.
How about the $10 million state grant to help us get this all started?
Happy to talk about it.
That's gonna be a good start.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thanks for coming.
Of course.
Anyone else? Don't be shy, okay? All right, uh, do we, um, did staff get good directions at this point, or you want?
I want to make, I want to make sure that we're clear on the direction. Beth, why don't you restate what you understand the direction is right now, the consensus from the council, that we can clarify from there?
Um, I'm, I'm not quite clear yet. I, I do know that part of the direction is to, when we do the housing element update, is to, um, when we do our changes to the zoning code, that we make sure we include all the artist type of uses within that code.
Okay.
That's what I got from Councilmember Sanchez, um.
That's the, the overlay portion. That's the overlay.
Uh, that would be within Area Two.
Artistic overlay, or?
No, that would be in Area Two. So those would be the zone changes to, uh.
No, but let me clarify, because, hold on, because Alondra is also part of the housing element, right? Alondra and Clark.
You know, that is correct, Alondra and Clark is.
So I'm assuming that that's gonna be part of that study also. Because you talked about the, especially the west side of, southwest of Alondra and Clark.
Yes, a smaller portion, but yes, that is also included, um, in, as a housing opportunity area.
Mm-hmm.
So a portion of Area One and a portion of Area Two would then all be, um, we'd have to consider including artist uses as permitted, or something that can easily be obtained if you guys wanted to pursue an arts district, especially in these locations.
Couldn't you do all the rezoning, and then we just put an arts district overlay over the whole arts district? Would that be easier?
We could do that too.
Would that be easier?
It, it sounds like it's almost like a two-step process, right? Cause one of them is directly linked to the housing element.
Right, the housing element is gonna be done. It's, it's, we gotta do that.
Yes.
And so we just did an overlay on, and on through the whole thing, and you can do overlay one and overlay two even. Cause we've done downtown one and two overlays.
Mm-hmm.
So an overlay along the entire study area?
Yeah.
We could do that.
I mean, if, I'm not saying to, I mean, I'm asking, would that be easier? It's just a recommendation from me. Or that's the way to do it then?
Mm-hmm. So in the areas that, uh, are gonna be rezoned for housing, we would include some development standards to allow for some artists and commercial law, some, some art uses, or some uses that will help establish an arts district.
Right.
Um, and then for the entire section of Clark between Alondra and Rose, we can provide an overlay zone as, uh, an arts, related to an arts district. Or come up with standards to create an arts district. Yes, we could do that simultaneously. I would prefer to phase it.
The tenor of discussion today, you'd want to prefer, you'd prefer to phase it, why? I'm just curious.
Just for timing purposes.
Timing purposes, and what would the phasing be?
Uh, we could probably start fairly quickly on the overall overlay zone. And then come in secondary with the housing element stuff and incorporating that.
So you have three parts to this. You've got the initial housing studies to do on the Clark and Alondra and the area south of the 91 freeway, essentially, right?
Yes.
Then you have the overlay, which would include both areas, Areas One and Two, as we see in the study. And then three, you'd want to phase one section ahead of the other in implementing. And I, I guess that's the part where I'm a little confused how you'd want to do that.
And I missed that portion.
Okay.
So I was talking about phasing meaning what's going first, the overlay or the zone changes.
So, all right, so tell, in, in plain language, explain where you think it's going, and then let the council know if that's the direction they want to get.
What's in your head?
No, let, let me clarify. There are three sections of Clark Avenue that are part of the housing element, right?
Yes.
Southwest of Clark and, um, Alondra, and then Park and Clark.
On both sides of the street.
On both sides, and then, uh, south of the freeway.
Yes.
Clark and Artesia.
Yes, and that's a good chunk of it. It's pretty much south of the freeway all the way to Ramona.
All right, okay, so now we're on the same page. Okay, now. So the, the housing element study is gonna be finished in about a year and a half?
Yes.
It'll be finished, okay. And how about the overlay? Portion?
We can start on the overlay pretty quickly. Um, I would say probably within this next year.
Why wouldn't you adopt those simultaneously, the overlay and the, the housing?
Uh, because the housing is phased separately, because we're focusing on the TOD first related to housing, yeah.
Are we using the same consultant, or same people working on these separate projects, or?
I haven't considered that yet, since we're, you know, we just brought this to the council.
It could be different.
It, it could be. Um, I'm thinking most likely it'll be different. Um, because for housing, it's really a housing consultant that we'd need onboard versus we might need somebody more versed in the arts to do the overlay.
Right, okay, okay.
How long would it take to do an overlay?
Probably between six to nine months on the quicker side.
What I was?
There could be, mm-hmm, but.
Guess that's my question. When you're doing the environmental work there for the housing element changes, why could you not continue, do that same time for the overlay? So you could save the step.
The environmental for the housing element has, or sorry, for the housing opportunity areas has already been done.
Okay, fair enough.
So that's already been completed.
So you're doing separate work, no matter what.
So, question, I've got another question.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Because you said that'll be a year, and I think I heard a year and a half possibly for the housing unit.
Yes.
Could we get the overlay done and have the overlay ready to go and adopted, and then do the housing a year and a half later? I mean, you know, if one's gonna get done possibly nine months, and then a year and a half the other one, that means art's done, and then you just gotta get the housing done. Was that?
Right.
Which is what I, which is what I was okay with.
Yeah, but then I was also hearing.
Overlay and then the housing, okay. Cause one, you can do one without the other, yeah.
I think they're to ask you to put the cart ahead of the horse on this. Get the overlay work done first, and then finish up the work you're doing now on the housing stuff, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. And what I'm hearing is, there's no, I'm hearing it's, the overlay would be done between Alondra all the way to Rose.
Yes.
Not split up, okay.
Right. Or you can do two, I mean, I'm sorry, or you, you know, see, Bellflower Boulevard was done in, in two different ones, because they had different overlays.
Yeah, so we could potentially do a whole overlay district, and then within the district have two distinct areas with different standards.
It shouldn't matter. If the economic arguments made in the report are true, and I think they are, then it really doesn't matter what we do. They're gonna develop separately anyway. So might as well do it. Let's get it done.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So in terms of timing, in terms of practicality, implementation-wise, what's gonna be the difference? So let's say, uh, best case scenario, we have artists coming to town right away. And we haven't done the housing element yet, but we have done the overlay.
Well, the housing.
Then you can recycle a building.
Exactly, so there could be a potential where they come in over.
Except for those sections which are not finished yet. That's the only practical impact.
Yeah, if you're not doing development, it's okay.
Yes.
It sounds like these things are sort of temporary things anyways. They've, the, anybody that wanted to invest in doing that would have to know, hey, this could all change as we go forward in the future, which is a fair risk, but it doesn't mean we couldn't do it.
Okay, so we're settled with the house, with the, with the zoning, right?
Yes.
We're settled, we're clear? I want to make sure before we leave this meeting.
I think we're all in agreement, but Beth, restate one more time how you view this going. I think we got it, but I just want to hear it.
I thought it was clear already. Okay.
And, and then I will add, this is really just related to zoning, uh, this discussion. So how it would play out is we would start work on creating an overlay district between Alondra to Rose, uh, for an arts district, and we would designate that as an arts district. Then subsequently, we would, or we're currently working on it, but sometime after that's adopted, we would then change the zoning for Alondra and Clark, Clark and Park, and Clark and Artesia to accommodate for additional housing. Included in that would be uses that could help support an arts district, like artist studios,
Okay.
art museums and things like that.
Okay, clear.
I think, I think, great. Uh, it makes all the sense in the world. I think where the rubber hits the road is, if somewhere in the middle of this, we decide we want to start incenting a different program, we have to rethink it, reconsider it at that point. But right now, we're not there.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
And the other question I have is, how about the other aspects of the recommendation?
Correct, so.
That's only the zoning part.
Right, so I think what, um, James provided earlier is if this is something that you wanted to pursue, which it does sound like the council wants to pursue.
We have the consensus on that.
Mm-hmm, he included some initial action steps that we can take to start the ball rolling, and correct.
So that's it. I guess that's the, I want to get the firing order first done, is what we just discussed. The second level would be, how much of this, uh, citywide actions, if all of it, do you want to include when we start developing guidelines for the overlay zone once it's established?
And what I'd like to staff to, to come back with is the implementation plan of this. In terms of timing, where do we start? What, for example, let's say, in terms of electronic survey, uh, of the residents, when do we do that?
Well, that's gonna be clear as mud, you know, as we, no, I mean, yeah, that could be a little more difficult, but I, I, you're right, you, you should have that, and
So I, I want to see. I want some plan of implementation.
I'm gonna guess six months or so is a reasonable time to talk about the implementation. Does that make sense to you? Does that work for this council? So
Okay.
So in six months from now, and we'll note it, because we don't want this to slip, we'll come back with the recommendations on these actions that we think we have consensus for now, on the citywide actions.
Six months is fair, so by the end of the year.
Works for me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, what, what departments, uh, is this gonna fall under? Is it gonna be planning, or is it gonna be economic development, or is it gonna be Parks and Rec?
Can I answer that? I think I leave it to the city manager.
Okay, all right, all right, I'll leave it up to the city manager.
I'll give it to Parks and Rec.
I was thinking of that, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not gonna go there, okay? All right, anything else? Are we clear?
Mr. Mayor.
Clear? Staff is clear?
Yes.
All right, audience is clear? Any more question? Okay, very good. Thank you so much for your time. Uh, again, Mr. Troyer, thank you so much for your study. Staff, uh, thank you so much for all the work you put in into this project. I think, um, I'm very excited about this. I think we're gonna make it happen. All right, thank you so much. And with that, uh, this meeting is now adjourned.